Welcome everybody at 6:30 and point order for education meeting for Thursday, February 18th, 2016. This is Rocker, time to set roll call.
Ms. Arnold, here. Ms. Hahn, here.
Mr. Morrison, here.
Mr. Ganna, here.
Mr. Taylor, here.
Please stand in the right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I sit on the box and I'm sliding off. Okay, the next time with the gentle approval of the agenda's presented, so come up with a motion and a second to approve.
To move something.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Rocker, please call the board. Mr. Morrison, here.
Yes.
Ms. Ganna, yes. Ms. Rigg, please. More comments, we're starting this time. Do you think it's good to see everybody here and be forward to hearing what the speakers have to share with us?
Good, welcome everyone, the opportunity to be reading.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, again, welcome, welcome to all.
Yes, welcome everybody to the way I'm here tonight, it's always nice to see people on the evening, come back and see us next month. At you next month, somewhere else, I'll tell you where that's going to be after. So, going to board reports, we have three reports this month, and the first one is athletic council, that's Mr. Morrison.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rigganna. The athletic council was scheduled to meet on Tuesday, February the 9th. Unfortunately, that was a snow day, so we did not have a meeting. However, Mr. Poppus did send out a update as to what was going to take place and we had the meeting, so I'll share that information with you. Our boys basketball team plays Pickwak at Trottolet in the first round of the Ohio High School Athletic Association sectional competition this Saturday. Our girls basketball team finished the season at seventeen and five. Their, the girls JV finished with a perfect twenty and oh record, and they are in tournament play right now. The boys and girls bowling programs both had another successful season, and both of the JV teams will undefeated, that speaks well for the future. In gymnastics, they're improving in each competition. In ice hockey, senior Brian Daniels has over four thousand saves for his career as a goalie. And if you are an ice hockey fan, let me tell you, you know what that means. In fact, he currently is the record holder for history of Ohio high school hockey, so certainly congratulations to Brian. Swim and dive team competed in the G-Walk competition, they finished second in the G-Walk Central, third overall, and that's out of eighteen schools. And wrestlers competed in the G-Walk competition, they finished fifth out of eighteen schools. Obviously, great things are happening in the world of sports.
Go Beavers, that was a great wow! I love it. Okay, Mrs. Arnold, your next.
Jill, uh, yes, there are two workshops being held in the, in the close future, School Finance 101 workshop, if anyone's interested in going, and then there's going to be a state legislative conference, which I've been to those before, and it's interesting to go and see the process, but you really don't get to be very close to your legislature when you do the testing.
Do you have the dates on the?
Um, I do. The 101 is, is on Thursday, February 25th, and the legislative conference is Wednesday, March 16th.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I would also like to just comment on board policies.
Board.
I think that it's time that the board did a review of, of policies because we haven't been involved in that for a while, and as always, the policies need to be tilted, you know, Ford Beaver Creek when necessary, and as long as this doesn't violate the law. So, I did talk with Mrs. Hayward today, and we do have an upcoming visit from the board people, so I'm going to sit in on that, and after that, if there are some policies in there that I think, you know, need somebody else's input, I might ask some of the board members to take a look, give me their comments or whatever, but I'm just going to take that on and get it started, so that's my.
Thank you. And I'm talking about reporting arts, oh, lots of good things, I love it. So, let me start with last week, Connections, they were down Cincinnati-Lowland, and Connections came in first place, oh Connections, Friends came in second out of fourteen, but that's really coming in first, so that's fabulous. We have incredible students, we really do, and teachers. This Monday, February 22nd, Beaver Creek High School, they had a concert, six o'clock, I'll be there, and I'm sure all of you will be too, you don't want to miss it, they're amazing. And then March, the third, fourth, and fifth, it's our Weekend of Jazz, I'm sure you're seeing these signs all over Beaver Creek. That is an amazing, amazing weekend, and just let me tell you a little bit about it, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, Thursday night starts at 6:30, there are free concerts by, including school jazz bands, and Beaver Creek High School jazz, one, two, and three. Friday night, starting 8:00 p.m., is the Gordon Gomes Big Fat Band, they're going to perform Saturday from 8:00 a.m., yeah, a.m., till 5:00 p.m. There are free concerts by twenty-one school jazz bands from all over the region. And then at 8:00 a.m. Saturday, Gordon Gomes Big Fat Band returns to the stage. So, if you have not gotten your tickets yet, you can go to weekendofjazz.org for all the information. I've been to this, every year this event, and it is amazing, I'm going to tell you, I never liked jazz before, ever, it's like, really, no. Until I heard our jazz bands, that has totally turned me onto jazz, because they are amazing, I mean, they even compose some of their own pieces, and that is just unbelievable, so. And I'd want to say, you know, the kids in our district, as well as the teachers, are beyond amazing. I would like to share this email I received from a parent who has moved out of the state, and it says, "My family moved from Beaver Creek last July to Mansfield, Arkansas. My daughter Alex, tenth grade, joined Mansfield's choir. It was then that we realized what an excellent music program and teachers that Beaver Creek possesses. My daughter was a part of choir and show choir in Beaver Creek. Mr. Eddie King, Mrs. Smith, and any other teachers participated should be commended for doing such a great job. It should not be taken for granted that all music teachers are capable of bringing out the best in their students. Alex made seventh chair in the all-state choir. She is the only capital L student from our new town to even qualify to try out. Would you please pass on my thanks and praise to those amazing teachers involved." So, I would love to give the seat to the. And I did pass this on to the teachers. Mrs. Hahn retired last year, but you need to know, I mean, it was great. And also, at the Invitational, I read it to someone, I wrote notes, I would forget it, and they were going to, they're going to be moving to Beaver Creek next year, because their children are their show choir, and they were from West Virginia, and they said when they come here, they are always treated so well by the people who run the Invitational, thank you. They love us, they do. Well, they are moving to Beaver Creek next year, they will have kids at Trayline, they know Mrs. Walker, Coy, and the high school, and they are excited for the heirs of child to be joining our choir. So, that says a lot for our students and our teachers. They are, and I'm going to say it over and again, amazing, talented teachers and students, so thank you teachers, and thank you kids, they're doing a great job representing Beaver Creek school, and with that, I'm going. Questions and comments from the public, there was none tonight. We have two or three presentations tonight, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Lockwood.
Would you, I, I do want to apologize.
What, what story, do?
Yes, we sort of do.
Oh.
Cindy asked me to make an announcement to the board of the Fair Plaza thing, and we were talking and I didn't.
I am so sorry, I have a one thing. I was running late, and I didn't, I didn't even get a chance to get my name out before I had to run in here.
Well, we're glad you're here, so I have to tell you, you know, you have to list your name and address, okay, you have three minutes to speak.
All right, Cindy Reese, Team 99, Turnbull Road in Beaver Creek. Two things, first of all, the basketball, the boys' basketball, I am like the, been the team mom this year for the basketball team, and we did have two boys that was likely for the G-Walk division teams, so, which was a great honor for John Alessandro and Jackson back for that. So, second of all, I just wanted to give a quick shout out, we have businesses in Beaver Creek who are donating food and snacks to these boys on a housing basis, so just a real quick shout out to Olive Garden, and BW3s, and Kroger's, and just to make sure, and Malano's, who have contributed and donated food and drink to our boys, and helping them bond as teams, so that's all I've got, shout out.
Thank you, that's, that is wonderful, thank you.
We were talking out in the hallway, Dr. Hayward tomorrow will bring the subject administrator to you, and we want to make sure that in a classroom or a building, our coach receives a donation like that, a kind donation from one of our businesses in the community, and make sure that we reach out to them and thank them. So, we're, we're working on that, making sure we feel it's probably being done, we want to make sure it's done, because as I, I've always said, it's an exceptional community, we want to make sure that we, we thank those who made it exceptional.
Thank you for doing that. And, Lockwood, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. We have three presentations this evening, first up is Mrs. Lisa Ball, the principal of Trayline. Lisa volunteered, I think.
That's so.
She said as a district representative on the State Routs to School Committee, and as everybody in the room knows, I am retiring until this, this school year, and I attend the meeting back, and I leave in October, and it was the kickoff for this, and I'm sitting there, and they're talking about the planning, and for the first time, it, it hit me, because they said the planning will take at least a year, if not more. I'm like, huh, well, I need to reach out and have someone else attend this committee. So, Lisa, I gave her a call, and she volunteered to sit on the committee as, as Todd Scott, the director of the committee on transportation, he is sitting as district representative. So, with that being said, we simply want to make your presentation out there.
Sure, I'd love to. And basically, I just wanted to give you an update that what the committee is doing, the district does not have to do anything, pay for anything, so I thought we might appreciate that aspect of it. The Ohio State Routs to School Program is funded by the Federal Highway Administration and administered through the Ohio Department of Transportation. The program supports projects and programs that enable and encourage walking and bicycling to and from school. And our committee consists of school district representatives, the fire department, police department, the city parks department, community members, so it's a large group, and with a lot of people who can make things happen. So, we started off with a survey to all of our elementary and middle school parents, we had about eight hundred responses, and basically looking for what do they, what would they like, what would encourage kids to walk or bike to school, what do they need in order for that to happen? How are kids currently getting to and from school? And would they support a program like this? If, and it is of no cost to them. Basically, people are very, very supportive of this, their concerns are what they would like to see addressed, would be things like the reason people drive or take the bus for convenience. We are not looking to replace biking or anything like that, it's just to provide another option for people who might choose to bike or walk to school. Another topic that came up in the surveys was infrastructure, talking about sidewalks, lighting, busy roads, crosswalks, those kind of things, and then they had some other concerns, weather, safety, those kind of things. So, those were kind of the three general areas that we're going to look at now as a committee, how can we address that so that we can help our kids make healthy choices and possibly encourage more biking and walking to school? There are two parts to the project, and one is an infrastructure project, those are, if we do decide to work with the city to have sidewalks put in, or increase lighting, or pathways, those kind of things, but there are also the non-infrastructure projects, which include education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluating our plan. Basically, once the committee comes up with a plan, as we have looked at all of the options, what are things that we could do to make this better for our kids, we submit the plan to the Ohio Department of Transportation, and once it is approved by them, then we will come back to the community and present it, and see if the community will support such a plan. Then the city pays for it upfront, and then they are reimbursed, so it's reimbursed. So, we just wanted you to know that we have been contacting parents and asking their input, and this is something that will be good for our school district, and we'll pass it down.
And that's your volunteer, too.
Next, our presentation we have, Mrs. Shenton, who is a guiding member of the advocacy committee, the advocacy committee is a grassroots committee that was started about five years ago, and it keeps an eye on things that are happening in Columbus, legislative update, specifically, one of the concerns has always been finding, has been very active in reaching out to our legislators and bringing them information from Beaver Creek schools, and what legislation might impact either positively or negatively Beaver Creek schools. And Mrs. Shenton, I'd like to present a resolution for your consideration of board approval after March 4.
And I don't have to sign in this time. I believe you know that we have had a advocacy committee that was formed about five years ago solely for the purpose of exploring the possibility of finding other revenue streams to fund charter schools. We know that the state hasn't been equitable in their stance to fund all of the state's six hundred and thirteen school districts, and basically Beaver Creek has to repeatedly ask for renewal or new money to provide for the added expenses of ever-increasing costs of educating our students and our increasing student population. We have looked at various means to address this situation, and I know that Mick Lucky and Peg Arnold have kept you informed, and as have Dr. Lockwood and Mrs. Rocker. The reason that I'm here now is to encourage you to add on the letter that you have in your board packet. I'm sure you know that several districts have sent letters to the state legislators, including Fairborn and Xenia, requesting the state to reimburse them for the money that has been taken from their local budgets to fund charter schools, many of which are managed poorly and are proving to fail to educate their students adequately. Mrs. Redkirk researched the amount that has been taken from our district's budget since 2006, and it is almost thirteen million dollars. We are asking you to sign this letter to let the state know that once again, they are penalizing local districts, and that they need to find another revenue stream to keep charter schools viable. We aren't denying the need for them, in some instances, they're necessary, but they're just not the necessity to take, it's not the necessity to take from the pool of money designated to public schools. Needless to say, to say, I could go on and on about the burdensome ways schools are funded in the state of Ohio, but by sending this letter to the legislators, we feel as a district, you are putting them on notice that we aren't happy with this situation. Let's face it, the more districts that contact them, hopefully the legislators will address it. At the very least, we are on record showing our discontent for the unsatisfactory way that our district is being defunded to support charter schools. Thank you for your time this evening, and we will continue our pursuit of finding alternative ways to find money to keep our district a great place to be educated. If you have any questions, there's a couple of us that have answered them, and if anybody here would like to see anything that I just said, there are, there are reasons why we need to keep our money local, that's what I'm asking you.
Mrs. Shenton, I don't have a question, but you have a comment. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and I think you hit it right on the head, why should local taxpayers pay for students to attend charter school when the students are not achieving as well as they are in the public school system? So, thank you.
And the majority of the people don't know the law, I guess, that's what's supposed to say, I mean, so thank you for bringing everyone's attention with that.
I would be recommending that on March 17th, even if we hold it personally, the board approve this resolution, and they'll be passing it on to our legislators for their review. And next, I will see the current final presentation is curriculum update presented by Dr. Susan Hayward and others.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to give you a curriculum update on Beaver Creek High School. I have three guests this evening, I have Mr. Jeff Jones, our high school principal, I have Mr. Sean Cook, a social studies teacher, and I have Mrs. Debbie Hermine, who is an English Language Arts teacher. So, I'm going to ask Jeff to come up, and he's going to give you a presentation on the Bring Your Own Device Initiative at Beaver Creek High School, and Mr. Cook and Mrs. Hermine, they're going to talk to you about the changes in course offerings for next year in social studies and English Language Arts.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, we're very grateful, proud to be here with my teammates from the high school, and hopefully what we have for you will be worthwhile in that area. As you said, we have our team here. I'll be the secretary of justice there. The part that I'm going to talk about tonight is BYOD, and what I will tell you, that prior to my arrival here at Beaver Creek, I was very fortunate to be involved with not more than two high schools to then met this. So, beginning back in 2008, I had an opportunity to start working on the process of introducing devices into schools in a meaningful way for students. I'm grateful for those experiences, because I think it's really helpful in the process that we're going through right now with the high school. There's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of great energy over there for BYOD, and I've got some statistics hopefully that will, that will please you here at the end of my presentation. Some things up there that I'll just highlight for you, obviously, this was a response from our community. Our community spoke out in a survey that said, "Look, we want to see our kids doing things that are meaningful for them for life after high school." Obviously, they are what are called digital natives, they have since day one been walking around like this. And I realize that day after day, my neck is more and more sore the more I do this, so I can't imagine what my kids will feel like here when they are done with their schooling. But they're digital natives, and we have to respond, because we, we have to do what's best for kids. And what's best for kids is to take those devices that they are so used to using, and find meaningful ways for them to continue their education. It's much different than when I went to school, in that I sat in my rows, I took my notes, I took my tests, and the person in front of me was the giver of information. Well, guess what? These things also very much are givers of information, kids look stuff up all the time. And by the way, they're also reading all the time. You know, I know that it was tough for me as a kid to open a book, these things right here, they are kids reading. It's really kind of neat, I, I know that this is a great process for our kids, I really believe that. Obviously, it provides expanded access to the district's network, as well as digital tools, there's a lot more here, but it also increases their academic studies, it prepares them definitely for future opportunities. A quick aside, I'm grateful to Dr. Hayward and her team, they have been instrumental in helping us implement this particular process at our high school. There's a great team of folks who are willing to do whatever it takes to help us make sure that kids use devices in our hands, so thank you very much for that. So, we did a great job, I think, given my experiences in researching what BYOD should mean to Beaver Creek. Implementing these kind of programs, you really have to understand your community, and I, we obviously have a great community with support from parents in that they have the ability to get kids devices, but at the same time, we also have some folks who had some questions about what if my kid doesn't have that type of device? The research we did, I think, was instrumental in the devices that we chose, and giving kids choice and the ability to say, "This device works best for me." So, I'm grateful for that research we pulled together. We provided technology training to staff members, and we're still in the process of doing that. I will tell you that Microsoft Office 365, which is probably what we'll talk about here in a moment, is going to be a great platform for our kids, because it will allow them to do their work online, it'll be a lot, it'll allow them to communicate online, allow them to do the things that they're going to be expected to do like we do in our daily work, and it'll be a great process for them. A thank you to Mr. Schuman and his team for working on our ability to have devices on a network. I have worked in districts where, and the analogy I use is a straw, well, the straw wouldn't big enough in those places I've worked before, where you couldn't get all the traffic through there. These guys did a great job getting us ready to handle all the devices and statistics at the end, and they demonstrate how important that particular process was, because, don't think of it as a kid just with a Chromebook or an iPad, because guess what they've got on their other hand, is it's attached to them, is that phone, so most times, a student's got two devices going at the same time, if not more, if they've got an Apple Watch or those other kind of things. So, thank you to Mr. Schuman and his team for the great work behind the scenes. I think we did a great job communicating with parents, with students, and community members, with our vendor fair, and giving folks the ability to come in and talk to people who know these devices, and give them access to purchase them at a, at a good price. I also think we did a great job of posting information to our district's webpage, and those pages continue to evolve, and members of our team here do a great job of responding to questions and involving us at the high school to help message those things out, and if we get new information, then we go, "Huh, somebody else might have that question." We've done a great job, I think, in dating our first asked question. This is Microsoft Office 365, and I will, I will compare us to a district that I think we, we compete with on a regular basis, because I agree with you, our pages are incredible, and they can compete. Ongoing Local Schools is dropping Google as a process platform, and are going to sell Microsoft Office 365. So, when I watch the folks that I know we compete with on a regular basis, are doing the things we're doing, that makes me feel good, makes me go, "Okay, we're, we're doing stuff," and their people follow our lead on that, so very grateful for that. The cool part for families to make is the fact they can download not one, but two copies of the office products to the machine they designate at home, the stuff that we use regularly to create documents or presentations or new spreadsheets. Families have the ability to download that software because of the work that we've done, and Mr. Schuman and his team have provided, for them to have access to that all-important tool that allows them to create and communicate what they know and are able to do. Another piece that comes with this that's been very important is digital citizenship, the footprint that you leave, because as you well know, if you've dealt with social media, you've dealt with any kind of email communication, what you say, once it goes out there, once you press send, it's permanent, and it represents you, and it represents us, it represents your family. And we've done, I think, an incredible job of talking to our kids about this, and saying, "Look, what you do matters." When you use Snapchat, you send something out there, it's now out there, but you use Twitter, it's blown, it's gone, and you tweet, it's out there. So, what you say matters, so I, I think we've done an incredible job with saying, "Look, when you're, when you're with us, we want you to communicate, we want you to use those tools to leverage them for good things they can do," while also saying, "Keep in mind, this stuff will resonate for a while, let me stay on servers, people do searches on you. Think about your future, think about the things that you're going to do, all the great stuff you're going to do. Don't make one mistake in a moment where you just want to let somebody know how you failed, but I think we've done a really good job of that." As well, again, with, with access to our district website and resources that are there, I think folks have a good place to start a conversation with us if they don't understand something, maybe they get their answer, we hope that's the case, but otherwise, if not, we've given them good information to start a conversation with people. As well, we've got some great network technicians who are giving us answers to, "Hey, my device doesn't hop on there." We've got folks in the library in the morning who are there just for the sole purpose of helping students get onto the network, which is awesome, because everybody's all over the place with this, and if you've got folks who know exactly what to do, they're probably, I mean, believe me, I hang my phone to kids all the time, including mine, and say, "Show me how to do this." We've got great people there helping kids who may not know, who may not know how to do this, we get them online, so we get them back into learning mode as fast as possible. So, as I referred earlier, you can get devices online, if you bring your own device, we've done a great job with the process of being able to register those devices, because we do recognize that students will make mistakes from time to time. We have the ability to identify a problem, help a student understand the mistake, as well as, you know, take care of any things that come from those mistakes as well by being able to identify those devices. So, really happy with that, and just in case you were wondering, this is obviously accessible with at the main building and Ferguson Hall, and that network, like when I walk in and out, just like with my device, the kids, when they walk in and out, their devices from the two buildings, if they happen to say, "In the band required, have to come over," or device on the map, it will hook up, because it's the same network, which we appreciate that as well. I mentioned the choice of devices, Chromebooks and iPads are two very popular devices. Now, I won't lie to you, I'm really happy to see kids feeling comfortable bringing their own laptops in, and I see them in the morning when I come through in the cafeteria doing stuff online, it's incredible to see, it is so cool to see those kids, you know, working before school. But the fact is, is that the research that we did provided us with enough information to say Chromebooks are good, iPads are good, and the devices are flying off the shelves or out of the carts. It's incredible that the kids have a choice to feel comfortable with the device they're using. One interesting aspect of that, I will say though, is that, I know for me, I'm not always comfortable looking at my phone because of the size, and I'm often fixed, one I get, my kids make fun of me all the time for what they call a fablet instead of a phone. But I'm still not comfortable necessarily in doing work on there. I can take those, but it's not my choice to do that. Our kids are actually pretty good at being comfortable with that. I think that's been a learning curve for me. I'm just supposed to be for myself and talk to the teachers. I think some of them are just amazed that kids can actually do work on there. And we have to take a step back and give them what's best for kids. We let them kind of tell us what's comfortable. They're okay using phones. I know sometimes we want to say, "Go get a Chromebook or go get an iPad." Well, I know they can do it. And I think that's something that we as adults, we as the folks who are facilitating the learning, need to keep in mind. These kids are okay with a small screen. I know my neck, my head and my eyes are a little bit for them, it's okay. Okay, so some statistics from month number one, this is incredible stuff. More than sixty percent of our students have connected a device to the network. You say twenty-six hundred? Sixty percent, you're talking almost fifteen hundred kids. And you're talking more than one device at a time. So over twenty-five percent of our students are accessing the BYOB Wi-Fi network at any given time during the school day, which means a quarter of our kids are accessing a meaningful device to facilitate their learning, which is so cool. Students are connecting with a variety of devices and platforms. And I mentioned laptops and tablets and other Wi-Fi enabled devices. I see kids with little, the, not phones, but their iPod. That they're able to bring those in and use them again. You know, I think some of those have faded because most kids got those, I've seen those. I think I've even seen a gaming system in there. The old PSPs that they had. It's amazing what the kids will bring now that they have access to the network. Because we got even my, some of our folks might not have the system access to the network either. So that's definitely cool. Over three thousand times, devices have been checked out. And I can tell you this, I know at Ferguson Hall, they've come close to run them out. I want to say it was, we came within five devices not having stuff, folks. Keep an eye on that. I know that I've walked up into our library and those carts that are in the side room that you're familiar with the library where we store that stuff, all the doors are open and they're all empty in the morning, which is just awesome to see. And I will say this, in celebration of our library staff, they've done a great job adjusting to their role, which is to help these kids get these devices. They have, it's been challenging, but they have been problem solvers and they work really, really hard to make sure our kids are doing what they do and I really appreciate that. Because it is sometimes hard in the middle street to add something you already did. But they've done a great job of adjusting on the fly. So we appreciate that. So with that said, that is what's going on at our high school here on BYOB. I am so proud of the fact that we are doing what's best for kids and meeting them where they're at and letting them help us decide how to best the world curriculum. And it helps their engagement, it helps their enthusiasm. And I know it's been a continued push, but it's already a great product given for it. I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak about BYOB. So with that said, I would love to introduce a much more eloquent speaker and probably more enthusiastic and much more entertaining than I am, Mr. Sean Cook, one of the association to review my speech.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Welcome. I told Mr. Jones on the way in, nineteen years of teaching in Beaver Creek, and this is the first time that I get to address the board, so kind of exciting, I think. I think all of the board members have been in my classroom doing presentations. So here I am today in your classroom doing a presentation. I want to represent the high school social studies department and let you guys know what we've been working on and what we've been doing. For several years now, we, as teachers, have been a little bit, I don't want to say upset, but our courses have been stale. Kind of the same course over and over again. A little bit for those that may not know at the high school, students will take a year-long ninth grade course in world history. And then in tenth grade, they'll do a year-long American history course. And in eleventh grade, they take a year-long course. And then they have to take government, their senior year. And a lot of the teachers, we were just thinking about this, it's been going on several years, that the students should have more of a choice on what they take. And as a history teacher, it's, I don't want to say scary, but everything's math, science. Everything, we're going math, science, and history gets left out of this. And it's hard, you have to convince students, parents, why is history important? As Mr. Jones said, you know, students can look anything up on their phone now. So why do you need me to stand in front of a classroom when a kid could look it up on the phone and there's the answer? So we were thinking about having more courses, more elective semester courses that are more specialized, where a student, you look at our year-long world history course or a year-long United States history course, and we are covering so many topics and we're flying. We don't get in-depth with many, many items. So with this, you know, route that we're going to go, a student can have the choice on the topic that they're interested in and get a little more in-depth with it. So last August, when I was finally recharged and ready to start thinking about school again, I had come in and spoke with Dr. Hayward and said, "You know, we really want some electives. We want to make this happen." And she's like, "Absolutely, let's do it, let's talk about it." So what I wanted to do today was just kind of show you guys what we've come up with. I think you have a handout. Green, blue, red in front of you. And what this is, is a printout, if you will, of the courses that we came up with. Our first step, we got together as social studies teachers in two groups. And we threw around the ideas, if you could have seen the whiteboard, we had every idea imaginable that we would like to teach a course. And we had discussions on what would students be interested in and, you know, what would teachers be interested in, in teaching, obviously. We went and observed other high schools in the area. Some of us went to Columbus High Schools. I went to Kettering Fairmont and walked around and saw some of the courses. Over the summer, Dr. Hayward gave me a list of about twenty high schools in Ohio. And she said, "Well, here you go. Research what courses they're offering." And I was sad, and I'm sad to say, we didn't even come close to what these other schools were teaching. They had all kinds of electives and we simply weren't offering these choices. So anyhow, we came up with a ton of ideas. And so on the sheet, if you have it there in front of you, the courses in blue are the new courses that we are going to begin offering. And then there are a few down there in green, and those are going to be rolled out, not next school year, but the year after. One other thing that I wanted to mention to you guys, we also surveyed the students. We put together a survey with kind of our whiteboard on a survey. And we put that out to our students. And all the history teachers put this on their webpages and the students were able to take the survey. We had something like seven hundred responses on this thing. And so we were able to break down, you know, percentage-wise, what students were interested in. They are really interested in AP courses. I mean, I think you can put AP in front of basket weaving and these kids would want to take it because it's an AP course. We're going to go from offering three AP courses to next year, we're going to be offering five AP courses. And so we certainly got input from the students and just, we have all kinds of things, you know, a few of these, and certainly not going to go over all of these, but history through film, a semester course where they're looking at various topics in history and watching a film that corresponds to it. It's certainly not, "We're going to watch movies every day." That's what my students were like, "All right, where was this, I want to take this." In Fairmont, what I observed, they would actually study the topic first, write a research paper, then they would watch the movie. And so another one is sports and society, which, again, students are excited, "Oh my God, a sports class." But what we're going to look at and what we're hoping to teach the students is, you know, what impact has sports had on American society? You look at somebody like Jackie Robinson and there's a new movie about to come out with Jesse Owens. And so that's another topic we could get into. My personal love, the Civil War course. The American Civil War is generally considered the most popular topic in American history amongst American citizens. And our students at Beaver Creek High School, unless you were in the honors tenth grade class, nobody had the Civil War. The last time Beaver Creek kids studied the Civil War was eighth grade. And so I've always thought, and what I have found is the older we get, the more into history we tend to get. And so for high school kids to not have the opportunity to study that huge part of American history, I thought was something that we needed to change. So to give you an idea of what's going to happen, this year, we are offering five electives this school year. Next school year, there will be eleven electives that are going to be offered for the kids. So they're going to have a lot more of a choice, which was very important to us, that the students would, we wanted to almost have a college field to where they would choose the topic they were interested in. Another big change for Beaver Creek High School is going to be government class, which is a year-long currently. Most schools we've found in the area, they're doing it in the semester, semester of government. So what we are going to attempt next year, we're going to offer it for a semester and we're going to offer it for a year. For the kids that want to take it for a year, they'll have that choice. Seniors next year that may say, "Wow, look at all these electives and it's my last year in high school," perhaps they'll take a semester of government. And that's going to open up a semester for them to take one of these electives that we have created. This will certainly, which courses get taught next year, it's going to be up to, you know, registration, enrollment, obviously. I'm sure that's about to start soon. And so we'll have a really good idea of what the students are interested in once they start scheduling for next school year. So I know, I'm really excited for this. I know the history department, we're really excited to get into some new courses where we have a curriculum meeting next Thursday where we're going to start actually writing curriculum for a lot of these courses. So hopefully you guys like the list you see and the history department at high school will just be even better next year. Definitely.
Civil War.
Civil War is a great one.
Yeah. Love American history, so.
Great.
Thank you for telling me this.
Not a problem. Took nineteen years to get here.
But you know why? One of the opportunities first.
It is, it's great. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Hermine, English Language Arts teacher at Beaver Creek High School. I'm here to tell you about the exciting changes to our curriculum. These changes come after much research and planning to develop these new courses. The English Department began last summer with about ten people conducting research on Ohio schools comparable to Beaver Creek High School. We looked into international baccalaureate programs, more advanced placement courses, semester courses, ACT, SAT prep courses and writing courses. We then visited schools in Ohio, Maryland and San Francisco that were ranked as top performing in order to gain ideas on how to make our high school one of greater achievement. I, along with three others, visited Lowell High School in San Francisco, which is ranked as one of the top performing public schools in the United States. I cannot even begin to tell you that impressed is not the word to describe Lowell High School. But the impression, what we were most impressed in was the amount of academic freedom and the student interest in learning there. One of the main reasons for such high interest and motivation was due to the amount of choices students had in their classes, particularly English lessons. We all know that we, as well as our children, do not like to be forced to read books in which we hold no interest. We all know that we will excel when we are interested in a subject. We are more motivated to learn. It is with this concept that the English Department has labored these past few months devising a curriculum that will give our students choice and at the same time meet the common core standards. At the ninth grade level, they understood that choice leads to motivation, but they were concerned that freshmen may not adjust easily to high school. After all, they had been taking reading and English as two separate courses through eighth grade. And when they become freshmen, this is now one class. Instead of switching teachers each semester, these students will now choose semester themes based upon their academic levels of general scholarship and honors, yet stay with the same teacher throughout the year. Their goal is to develop high school-level reading and writing skills that will prepare them for the next three years. Several more classes will continue this model and focus on developing poor reading and writing skills while improving student analysis and interpretation of literature. Writing will focus on crafting clear communications through the use of more sophisticated conventions of writing. The most choice will come in the junior and senior years. In these classes, students will have a choice of six semester classes to take over the two years, each semester counting as a half-credit toward graduation, so they will not be allowed to. The choices are theme-based and students will continue to build skills in critical reading and interpretation and writing with a specific purpose and audience in mind. In December, junior and senior teachers gave the students a survey which listed thirteen different classes, and they were instructed to choose the six that interested them the most. As students chose these semester classes, these courses will be presented at either a four-point-oh or a four-point-five weight scale, so that we will still have what is known as general and scholarship classes. In addition, we are adding another advanced placement course, language and composition, which may be taken in junior year. Advanced placement courses have taken the place of honors in senior year, now it will be in the junior year. They will have the opportunity to follow up this course, senior year, with literature and composition. Students taking AP classes may take the semester classes as electives, so they still have choice. Electives will now be available for ninth through twelfth grades. We've added a couple extra to help prepare our students for college. One is strengthening composition, which will help students with their writing skills and develop their arguments for a variety of writing types and audiences. And we will have an ACT/SAT prep course, which will help students prepare for these exams, which I think is something that they're really looking forward to taking. It is our firm belief that by providing students with choice, we can facilitate their motivation and their inspiration. This choice will be similar to what they will have in college, and students tend to feel more confident if we give them this freedom. We look forward to having our students excel in writing and prepare for college as this new curriculum provides the rigor necessary to succeed. Hundreds of years ago, when I was in high school, I had semester English classes, but I did not have semester social studies classes. And I have to say, I could not stand social studies and it wasn't until later in life that I developed a love for history. I hate for our students to have to wait that long. I looked forward to my semester English classes because I made the choice to enroll in them. I still remember those classes today, and perhaps it was because of those classes and the teachers, it provided me with a love of writing and reading. And I hope that I have a strong enough love to want to share that with my students. Thank you.
If I may, real quick, just to follow up, the word that I heard continually throughout our discussions tonight is choice. I really believe that our customers are the people we need to be listening to the most. You know, as I said earlier, when I went to school, there was a rope set of things that we did. But I also believe that at the time I went to school, it was very different. I am so proud of our staff, and I know these, I'm sorry at times, but these two staff members right here did a great job in helping lead these processes, I feel. By keeping the focus on what's best for kids. I'm very proud of them. I know that we're doing the right stuff for kids. And as long as we keep our customer in the focus of what we're doing, our kids are going to continue to make that work really, really good. Very grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for inviting us, thank you for having us. And we look forward to making this stuff more perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. All of you, thank you. Well, I know it's a lot of work. I know I'm a journalist. I can't even imagine the journal I'm in, really. It's like, when I walk into the high school, I feel like I'm walking into some kind of corporation. It really is. Third graders are one thing, but the high school, you deal with adults really, so thank you from the bottom of my heart, really thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd just like to throw in that my 2004 and 2008 graduates are going to be so there. Because they didn't get that opportunity. And I think what you've listed out here are things that, I'm going to test this, I think those kids would have been thrilled. And so I just would want to say that I appreciate especially the teacher who worked here. Thank you.
More intense item, four minutes help for January 22nd, to this block, I'm getting the motion to second to approve minutes for January 12th, which is the organizational meeting, January 12th, tax budget meeting, January 12th, regular meeting, January 21st, special meeting, and January 26th, special meeting, all 2016. Is that second? Any discussion?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Question carries. We're moving on to financial reports. And I'm going to do this in the block too. We've got the motion to second to approve January 2016 financial reports and donated items, one on page fifty-two and one on page sixty-one. Any discussions?
I just want to briefly go over the fact that we are still in alignment with what we projected in our five-year forecast. We are up a little over a million dollars in our state foundation collections. And so we will know a little bit more about that as we dive deeper into the financial formula that they have now finalized for the state foundation. We know we're up a few children, about thirty-four kids to date, but we think there's some other, there's over four hundred variables in that formula, so I won't go to decimal points. And so there's just a few things that we just think that are settling to our favor. And so we're going to be looking at that and be able to refer out a little more of the details on how that five-year forecast may. But everything else, we're pretty much right on track, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for what you did for us.
And the state foundation vows we refer to based on last year's formula because it won't be till the second, in February, we're getting this year's.
Right. So we didn't have as early a lot to work with on our October forecast. As you can imagine, we were doing a whole lot of guessing. But today, we can see that we're up over a million dollars from what we projected.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Arlen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Question carries. Next time is new business, announced employment, salary changes, these absences or terminations, that's on page sixty-two. Making the motion second?
No move. Second.
Any discussion?
These are very customary things. February, very brief, a few supplemental positions that we're filling, some steps for employees and some post-graduates to help staff with our fleet, but very changed very long in February, very long.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Arlen?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Fergum?
Yes.
Question carries. I know I'm just switch around the next two items because we're in executive session, but would you be announced, otherwise nobody will hear the announcement. So we're switching things, we're all just switching things around. So our announcements are the next Board of Education meeting, it's a special meeting on February 24th. Then we have another special Board of Education meeting on March 7th. February 24th, one's at 6:30 right here in the administration building. March 7th, 5 o'clock, administration building. Another special education meeting on, special, I'm sorry, right, education special meeting, on March 9th at 5:00 p.m., administration building. Our next regular board meeting will be on March 17th at 6:30 at the Greene County Career Center. And that's on 29960 West Dean and Rowan and Zena. And our graduation is coming up soon, but we do not, really it's worth believing. May 28th, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in the Nether Center. How do you give those kids up if you have four years? I mean, I mean, for one year was hard. I thought for more, how do you give them up after four years? Like a family. Right?
Well, maybe you're ready for it. I don't allow to say that.
Okay.
Seniors in high school, come May, you're ready.
You're ready. Well, so now, we're into executive session. And I'm watching all these special meetings, what happens is because we're doing this, you pretend to search. It's very nice morning, how can they have so many special meetings? That's what they're all about. And that's where we're going to executive session tonight. Executive session, I'm going to redo this, we're consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, displace, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employee, student, or school official or to investigate charges or complaints against any such person unless the person in question requests a public hearing. Tonight, there will be no action taken. So, I don't, I need a motion, oh, I need a motion, I need a motion second to go to executive session, so. Second. Thank you. Ms. Cole, please.
Ms. Arlen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.